What's happened in the last month if you want to report?
Yeah, I've taken some complaints about dogs running in town and getting loose. I know the sheriff department has been involved in some of those. I know there's some citations that's been written over it. That's on those and then... There's something else. I called you the other day. I just went blank. Oh, again asking if we were making any headway with traffic flow for Main Street to create more parking. Is that it?
Of course, then, I don't know. Which had worked about district meeting, whatever, that went well, of course, then Sather. Just this had been, there's a lot going on. I can never remember everything, but no idea when to take this minute. I talked with Sam today about all the stuff and we both come to the agreement that there was just some misunderstanding and misinformation led to be saying some things that probably shouldn't have been said apparently, but anyway, we're good on that deal and I tell him that you know, we make an apology here, but I would definitely try to get something to the papers, you know, and take care of that. There was no wrong doing or nothing going wrong. It was just, I just wasn't getting good information from vice versa and he same thing in our communication. We both agreed that communication should have been better on both sides, but we're good. And I just wanted to apologize for, I didn't even read what was out there, didn't even see the video, but I know me sometimes and I get carried away, so, but that being said, we'll move on to old business. And don't look like we have anything that we know of up. Oh, you business, I think I discussed this a little bit last month, McJunkins property. It's weird. We actually got some property that we didn't even know we had that the city had for years and the only way we even found out it came about is a bunch of heirs and taxes hadn't been paid, so. Tax attorney for the county had run across that and then the snow was telling me about it and we was like, but in the long story short, the city, you know, we wanna, we don't wanna lose it to tax sale. It's like 121 acres. So, we decided we'd probably just try to pay the taxes and get them caught up and then we'll take care of that and then if any of the family come forth and, you know, works it out, whatever, however we need to do it, you know, that's, I haven't made, I haven't made contact, but I did find somebody that I know that is part of the family that I didn't, I didn't realize, so, I think they live in Sweetwater, that I know their kid, so, I need to hopefully try to make contact there and see if any of those are living, but I'm pretty sure most of the ones on this, on this deed is passed. We're probably in the 34th generation. Or maybe 4th or 5th for that matter, for as far as kids or grandkids or anybody that's, that might even be interested in it, so. But if we do that, that'll give us time and then Eric can work on, you know, we find something like, there's, there's some ways that we can, you know, maybe acquire the property or buy it or however it works out, you know, but and then they may not be, they may be none of them even interested. The way I found out about one, the lady, the girl I went to school with, she was married to a McJunkins. And he's no where around, but I think she's, he was actually adopted, but then there's the ladies that she mentioned and I'm like, okay, but I don't even know if it's the same set of McJunkins, but either way, so, we're going, sometime when I get my nine four need to have so much at work, write it down, so, call and try to find out. But, but in the meantime, we'll just pay the taxes, we'll take care of it, I think a year of the swap. Not much really. It's crazy that you got that fort behind, but, but I think we discussed that and Jane was fine with it and don't have a real total right now, do you? And we're thinking, we know the back taxes from what Eric says, eighty-one hundred fifty.
Eighty-one fifty-seven.
Okay, eighty-one fifty-seven, so, we'll pay that. I'm sure the county will be glad to get some of our money for that, but hey, it's barely going through the state. I mean, it's a, it's a big track of land and I'm sure somebody would show up for it. We'll do that and keep it going and see what happens and if they all come together and decide to sell, I think if we got like eight of it or something, I think if it come down to it, the city's got eight acres, if you break it down into, like Sid Man, then you break it on down, who knows, so, but we'll by your motion to pay the taxes on the property, one of the McJunkins, one of the McJunkin ruled.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
And just whoever needs to find out, because we don't wanna go into November because then there'd be another fee for it.
Find out tomorrow, which I know when.
Do, do, we didn't sign a check for it now, right? They need us to sign.
If you want to and then when I get a total, I can send it to everybody and, and see how that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's on the papers. He already sent us. You just gotta.
Yeah, it's on the email.
So, we'll need two, 'cause one will go to Gina's office and one will go for Delancey, so.
That way when you find it, you got it, you gonna have to run it down.
So, I'll take care of that first thing.
That was a gift to the city from Billy Blows, still. If it's a good thing for us or not, it's sort of wild.
Do we know when that took place?
Oh, yeah, it was, well, nineteen, it's been a long time, nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah, my start of science.
As before, I was worried and thinking anything about. You know, who knows how he may have got it. It may have been some work he done for him and they just give their part to him just to cover. All your expenses or something. I don't know how that works. I haven't seen Betty talk to it, but I'm sure he, he probably remembers it. Okay, and then next, we'll be with it. Yep, there's a commercial lease agreement with Dr. Peyton here at the dentist office, 'cause he's been with, been doing it, yes, I forget. Almost in 2007, one of the summers through there. He's been around for a long time. I don't blame him. It's not expensive, but he does that, so, does the rent change this year? Get rent for, you know, we put percentage, you know, but I don't remember how it ran. Yes, there's still five hundred a month, so.
Wow, that's.
That way it is cheap.
That is very, very cheap.
Yes, of course, he'll, he'll talk about it, want to buy it, one thing or another and stuff, but, but we just keep it that way and he just up there one day a month. It was, yeah, he, he's good with it now. I think when we first done it, it was just four hundred or something. We left it that way for a long time, so. Yeah, he, he knows and it's well worth his time, his four, his four days a month. He's up here and, yeah, he's, he's fine with it. He knows, he's got a pretty good deal, so. So, I hear a motion to accept commercial lease agreement with Dr. Peyton for the dentist office.
I'll make a motion.
My second. Don't call.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
That's all I just did, so.
Yeah.
I tried to forward emails to you. I don't know what went there or not, 'cause man, they start piling up there from John Economic Development. Did you get any of that stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I went sure.
Yeah.
'Cause I hit one and I thought, I don't know if it's sent it all or just, but anyway, so, did you read, understand any of it? I know they're working on a grant trying to get, and it's a good thing, 'cause the old courthouse down there desperately, they just didn't need it for a while for a long time and they just, these grants have been out there, so, finally they found somebody that's interested in trying to, trying to work to get it so they can get it fixed up. So, I guess we need to pass the resolution. Two, I think this is just one that they didn't send it right. We didn't, we didn't write this right.
No.
Yeah, I'm thinking. Thinking Greg, he might have downloaded whatever, but anyway. Of course, we're leaving, resolution two twelve, "The Resolution of the Mayor and Commissioner of the City, Ducktown, Tennessee, in support of a historical development grant for the restoration of the Polk County Courthouse." Which is, "Whereas the Polk County Courthouse listed in last year's register of historic places, continue to serve Ducktown residents by housing essential for county service and whereas the courthouse is in urgent need of repairs, including windows restoration, ADA compliant restrooms, HVAC upgrades, roof replacement and other things. See, whereas restoring a courthouse is a cost-effective way to preserve a valuable historical asset and maintain the necessary government functions. See, now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor and the Commissioner of the City, Ducktown, Tennessee, Section One, the City of Ducktown supports the Polk County's application for a historical development grant to restore the Polk County Courthouse. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon the adoption of the public welfare required." We just have to do one reading, I'm guessing, okay.
Yeah.
So, do I hear a motion to accept resolution two twelve? My second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
Get to make, make it. Yeah, did last third, anyway. I wish that a lot better. For that day anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's our way of doing it. Yeah, but, I just signed it, signed it. And it is, it definitely needs some work. And I think it'll be the third, he'll probably do it, see, 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 cancel whatever they're doing back at that town. But anyway, it does help them out, because the way this deal is with John Economic Development and three stores, we're all in to work together, so maybe we do something on this and something coming that's gonna help us, they should do the same for us, so. That's why we, that's what we set it up to do anyway, so, hopefully it will work. Everybody should be good. Of course, next new business is Christmas decorations. Do you want to get into that?
Um, no, that's fine. I will, um, I was contacted a couple of days ago about, from someone from the Kiwanis Club, you know, hoping that we could maybe do some marketing with the parades together, because, you know, we kind of go off them. It's the same day they cancel for whether we follow. That way they're still on the same day, 'cause a lot of the people, it's the same floats, you know, they just bring them straight from Copper Hill to here, so, I was, I think that's a great idea. But here, the tree lighting will start at six o'clock and the parade will start at six thirty. I am gonna have to purchase a tree for the tree lighting and we're gonna have to buy, there's no garland anymore to go along with the sides and some decoration to put out through town. James had sent me a link for some commercial ones, but each one of those is gonna cost about $400 apiece. Luckily, you know, we do have our ornaments and stuff to hang up through Main Street. There was a couple of those that were, James had even said that needed to be replaced.
Replaced, yeah.
Yeah, but I need, I'll make whatever work. I'm gonna try to get some help too from other people in the city, but I need a budget. I need to know what I've got that I can work with to, like I said, I can make it work. I just need to know what my numbers are.
Guess you probably need to get an idea of how much you want to spend.
Well, no, well, I have. I mean, I, yeah, yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been putting stuff in carts and stuff. I just, and I did.
Have you checked Hobby Lobby?
Um, I have some, but not the big, like the commercial ones, 'cause I wanna make sure.
Right.
You know, I just need to, no, when I, when I know for sure, you know, how much money I have, then I know how much I can put towards a tree or what I can do, you know, 'cause like, tree's the main thing. Everybody's in town and gathers around a lot. I just kinda need a ballpark, what we're looking at.
What if we get into events now? 'Cause I know we had, we increased that, but the fireworks going up and stuff and the miners home come to rear, we started that, the budget about six thousand.
Oh.
And you know, anywhere, anywhere, and the biggest part of that now is fireworks. We didn't add any more to it when we reached down the budget, did we?
No, I left, right now it's budgeted for twenty-five thousand for events.
You know, it's sort of weird, last couple of years, fireworks have come, did it before, after, did it? Rolled over, so I mean.
Yeah, it's like half and half, so.
So hard, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, do we know what we got in that budget right now? Where this new year, we started this.
Well, yeah, we hadn't, just a few of miners home kind of things we had to put in this year, just 'cause the way that it failed, but now we, we've narrowed it all up.
Deal with the general idea.
Right, there it is.
The sad time.
'Cause I wanna do as much as I can and I can.
Well, right now, for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we've only spent $492. But I know fireworks are a lot.
Yeah, but also it gets closer, money changes and we watch what we do and we know. We don't like to do budget amendments. We're very sorry, but we can if we have to and we'd like to be in June if that come up. You, and when they get that set up early, we're used to pay ahead.
Usually about February or something like that.
We'll, we'll cover most, most of it and try to, yeah, and that helps. That's why it's not just a big one-time book. What did you get estimated right now? 'Cause the thing about this, whatever we spend is not gonna be used just this year. It'll.
Oh, no, I mean, it's an, it's an investment for Christmas in Ducktown to go, you know, and we can build off of it. I mean, 'cause we really don't have much of anything, other than what's on the street poles. I mean, I don't think there's, you know, that I'm aware of, much left. I mean, like I said, I'm already over six thousand and that's.
Now, have you been over at the hospital, look and see what, oh, we've got in there?
I have not been there.
You could go over to check it out. I was in there the other day. Got tables. Kept missing tables. I thought, where are their tables? Could miners home come? Was it over there?
It was over there.
Yeah, I got them for them.
Yeah, we had talked earlier about going over there and she had some stuff that she knew was there. Hopefully we can restring some and, you know, work some. But I just needed something to work. I mean, of course, I'll go there and look and use everything we can. It's gonna get here before we know it.
You don't want to buy something you've already got.
Oh, exactly, yeah, no, absolutely.
Might be, 'cause there's, you don't think there's that much that you go over and you're like. We expect it, no, but, but we just keep it over 'cause it's easy.
And like I said, I've got some people I'm gonna hit up also to help and I've had several people offer to help us do some stuff, not, you know, that they'll help us get the stuff up, help us decorate, restring things, trying to get some other people involved, some different singing, some stuff going on again. Where it's not just the parade, you know, where people are in town.
Yeah, 'cause you have that gap from two o'clock and, you know, we tried to fill that gap with it.
Yeah.
And Jim appeared doing a gospel singing there a couple of years and man, it was great. It worked good, but, so, last year we just we rocked the boats.
Like I said, I'll, we just needed some numbers.
But that, that may be something we're still working for too, just to give that, you know, twin crowd, 'cause I mean.
Because most of your people do. They come from there, they wanna go eat and then they kill time until time to start here.
I mean, it worked out good, but.
And maybe that's something we can get it going.
I think they would be fine. We're trying to do it again, 'cause it was, I mean, it worked out pretty good. It was just something, just to try to fill that gap and, yeah. Turned into a little, little ruckus, so to speak, from some of them, so, we just decided to do it right, but I think we can get it back. Maybe. It'd be pretty good.
So, what do we think?
I mean, you got that much, yeah, I mean, we, we got it in there, so.
We got it in.
Figure out what you, you need there and then we're going.
Okay.
If it don't take that much, that's one thing.
Absolutely.
A little bit more than.
Okay, that can work. Like I said, I just needed some numbers.
Pull it and do nothing with it, so we've got it there, but.
That's good to know.
Then get it, yeah, 'cause, yeah. We'll get it through, seems like.
It'll be here before we know it, though. I mean, first Saturday, December, we'll get here quick.
It's a year away.
Then we've got Halloween. Is there anything that we need to plan or have ready for Halloween?
No, we usually just, I close the streets off, you know, like I've always done, the worst year to come out and work and that helps and fire department, they've been coming, so I'll get them to sit there still. Slow the traffic down and.
Something with the B from her, she didn't call this week and asked when we was doing it and all that and said that they would be here.
Message.
And everything and then she asked about, you know, the Christmas parade and everything and I told her to get in touch with you about that, but they're gonna be here and they're gonna set up a fire truck so kids can see and hand out candy there as well, somewhere between here and the red light, but they're gonna be present that night also for Halloween.
Well, I think it's just probably beautiful. Unless they've got calls, they're pretty good. That's other, 'cause the worst place we have to worry about here is this red light that the kids cross and, man, we've been blessed.
So, there's a lot.
At least that, when they see the light, I mean, it, they slow down and that definitely, it don't hurt to slow down just for a second, man. You don't want to hurt somebody or kill somebody. You wish it'd stop the way you act, but, but it's worked out. We've done, we've been really blessed all these years, so. But we'll do that. I know the church is doing five thirty, seven thirty, and we're using five thirty a day, whatever.
And I'll make a post about that also.
People give up the.
And I'm gonna, they can start bringing in their wreaths to the city hall.
The church is five thirty to.
Seven thirty. Things are together, you know, forty, forty things are together. And that, that worked pretty good, whole, whole. Of course, everybody been doing that Friday night, but it's, it's, man, if you're good, you can take your kid here, Copper Hill, you can cover a lot of ground. And mom and mom always got enough candy right here that'd be laying around for six months, be, finally just throw it away. We give out about nine bags every year. Other than that, yeah, just see what you get. We, we got it.
I'll send messages.
It'll work for him, see. What you gonna go, list October sixteenth, there's a planning commission meeting. I don't know if we're have, have one or not. He came up, we did have one the other day, but we, we're paying for them. We got it. If it's just training or whatever, need to have more than what we've been having. And it's weird, if we won't have them, we'll have one every month for six months or something, but, yeah. And then the house will meet, it'll be the twenty-first of Tuesday. Thirteenth, if, if we have it. Of course, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, we'll be doing the Development District Retreat up in Pigeon Forge and we're bringing books, mine and book, I think Jane and Regina's in the book. So, yeah, I'm sure they emailed you and stuff that you get copied on all that. So, hopefully, hopefully we can all go bring it. It'd be pretty good and not be crazy like it's been the last, I don't even wanna go to Pigeon Forge. But that's usually good. It's, I mean, you'll meet a lot of people and you'll, it'll hit you down the road. Only thing I says to me the other day, Thomas is good. I mean, we show up, we come down here and we have your regular, try to make those meetings. Then we have people that show up for that. You never seen that ever here, you know, which I mean, hey, that's, that's what it's for, but at least some of them will show up, so. Yeah, that's pretty good to go bring. All that good stuff, I guess. But other than that. I did, which I think they, yeah, I called it back, about the insurance on the truck. Yeah, and they're sending, they're sending a guy, but he'll call, says go in to kind of, I think I mentioned that to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I called it back.
Where did we get the truck back?
It's at, yeah.
And then go up there.
Yeah, and actually it, it's amazing. It's not bad, you know, really, it's not, I mean, it's drivable.
Just a different color, no dump bed.
Well, they get some, with the dump beds, don't they? They just took the sides off, 'cause they had to slide inside, so, I mean, you can put wood back on them, but Wesley's like, oh, we'll fix it and radiator busted, so, but they cranked it up. First, the new transmission didn't, didn't want to move it. They, I don't know if they drained the fluid or what, but they, they put fluid in and it's fine, so. That's another thing that we probably need to do. Pay him for that labor. You know, 'cause that was the only thing. We paid him for the transmission and for the labor. You know, 'cause we weren't sure what was going in, but everything is, is like it's supposed to be. And actually, apparently.
Twenty-two dollars a labor.
So, if you wanna write that check, I'll tell you, we can go ahead and sign that or whatever and I'll tell him, there we go. They had done it and everything good, but really had, well, had combined it together. Stole it for him to get out, got to bragging, you know how that is. Told you, told you wrong folks, but here it went.
Told you, Sheriff, we can't even found it.
Yeah.
No, stole your truck?
Stole the red, the big red.
I'm like, just saw it riding by earlier.
No.
No, no, the big.
Say the new one.
The red Ford or dump.
The one Wesley's.
Wesley drives all the time.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, stole it.
August twenty-sixth.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, yeah, we just. But anyway, yeah, we was having new transmission put in, apparently, they got the transmission in and he got it out, it was the most, stole it.
Guess they need a new transmission.
Well, it, they, it was all theirs, and we got it, got it back up here now, we're just getting insurance guys to come look at it and see whether they towed it or just fixed it, so hopefully. Yeah, we're getting it, and still.
I, I, I don't mean to be a pastor or anything, but I wanted to talk to you about the construction works going on.
That'll be fine.
I just figured it'd be after all this, since I didn't wanna call you at the house.
No, we, we used to get comments from the floor.
At the end.
Then just crossed my mind, I thought, probably go ahead and tell them we do that. You may not have a Christmas decoration, we keep signing checks, really, oh my God.
I'll see him in the morning, cause his wife will usually bring an invoice and pick up a check and that way.
It works.
He takes care about it at once.
Other than that.
I know she's got one.
Of course, October thirty-first, five thirty date, probably, you just stay here in town, you'd like to keep the streets closed or whatever. Yeah, yup, hopefully, the weather be good and we get through that, it's hard to believe, it's already October, halfway gone, I'm like. But other than that, you know, look down here, October thirteenth, Columbus, we don't close city, garbage and stuff, everything will be just normal on thirteen. The banks won't be open, the post office.
It's after nine thirteen.
It's Columbus Day.
About six.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought Halloween was on thirty-first.
And we usually. We, we could probably tape that, but what we do, we give that. We don't, we just work October for Columbus Day, but we traded that for that Friday after Thanksgiving, that Easter holiday weekend, yeah. Yeah, that, that works out, they used to come in, try to get garbage that morning, and as fast as possible, they have to leave in the trucks, they do it, but. And then go on back, enjoy family time. But other than that, I think that's pretty well got everything covered, I hope. And then.
Well, I talked to Mr. Holden, and he's Josh, and he said he contacted y'all about sending them a letter. And I just wanted to know if you'd had a chance to go up there and take a look at that property or what was going on with it.
No, but, and then it's weird.
Cause he's got about eighteen inches off the property line.
And Josh did.
Josh said that there's been no permits pulled whatsoever.
Yeah. He, the letter he sent him was pretty straightforward.
They haven't been up there, I was just wondering, he said, well, I've talked to Doug, or I sent a letter to Doug.
He's sent a letter, yeah.
He told me.
And I run into him for red light the other day, just.
And I, I talked.
Had time to talk.
I talked to him the other day also, and he goes, well, just go by and mention it to Doug, and let him know your concerns and.
Yeah, cause I didn't even know what was going on, and.
He didn't let anybody know, apparently, but he's built a, he's basically built a ten by twenty-foot addition to the building, it's attached.
Oh, there's a nice.
An entrance into it, and an entrance out, entrance for the building into it, and entrance out of it to the back lot, that's run about. So, you remember how the deck was?
Right.
He's cut it about where I have a walkway, about that wide, put a rail on it finally, and he took the rest of it down, and I was out of town at the time, and I thought he was just redecking it, but. Tore it all out, but shed, shed about that far off the property line, with the eaves running right down the middle of the property line, no firewall. And my concern is that if it ever catches fire, it's ten feet from my house, and my daughter and my grandson sleep right above it. So, it's a fire hazard. And I've been in construction, I've been a general contractor for years, and I know for a fact it made a firewall on that thing, oh, two hours.
But did you build it completely enclosed in?
Yeah.
Obviously, I hadn't.
Yeah, it's, I'll, I'll take picture of you.
I would like to see pictures.
He stopped, just I put in the standard seam roof on it.
Yeah, but that's.
Yeah.
It passed me, but Josh.
When I walked out, I was out of town that weekend, and I walked out and could see how the deck was going, I'm like, uh.
Ain't no dent.
That's a problem.
And Chief told me somewhere, I don't know, on my phone, sometime he just showed voicemail note, and I was looking through both of them.
I didn't wanna bother you, cause I know you work every damn day too, so.
Maybe have these. I don't know what Josh's letter said. I mean, there was a lot to it, but I think he asked.
This is the rail.
Yeah, he did, he asked.
Side of the building.
Look, I'm just, I've never been back there, so I'm asking, so these were connected?
This was connected back in the day.
David built that building, and he owned that.
He built the deck that connected the house to the, to the thing. This is where the property line is, that's the end, that's all the deck that slept, all this was all decking. This is about sixteen inches here, this is the building he built up, down the length of it, or this is.
I guess who, who built it, her husband or?
I think it was the guy that rents the property to her, I'm not really sure.
Well, they own the property or?
They own the property.
Yeah, they own the property.
It was her husband.
Yeah, Andy, you know, Andy used to do some building, but I wasn't sure if he, if he had it worked, so.
Well, the issue is, in buildings, though, we would have needed to come by and have clearance, of course, as you know.
Yeah, but you got your setbacks.
Your setbacks, and they set back here in most places at ten, twelve feet, and this is eighteen inches. This is the framing of it, we can see there's no firewall that have been built in. It's directly attached to the brickwork. Twenty feet long, ten feet wide. There's the door leading into the property, I mean, into the building, we had another one down here at the end that leads out the back of it. But it runs off the brickwork from where the deck door, the door on the deck, it's come out on that walkway, all the way over to the property line, and it runs almost to the back of the building, full length. It's attached to the brickwork, so it's attached.
Feel it to the, I'm sure they needed it, I don't know what they done, you know, they grew, I mean, they've got a lot of business, so.
It's hard to hear that, but I don't need a fire at it, none of my house either. I understand they probably did, but.
And they know we have.
Well, they know we have. On the back of the building, they could build that one too.
Yeah, it's a little bit falling back in the back, but, I think they know, I don't know why they didn't. Tell me get a permit, cause I mean, we're pretty well, most people know that. And, and even, it should have come for the planning commission, I mean, we have a meeting, but that's where you decide, you know, setbacks where you can or can't go. Or if we wanna grant a variance, and we just hope.
I know, I know, that's exactly why, I was like, oh, you would know more about that, that's your line of business anyways.
Hadn't been through any of that, so it would have been, it would have been nice.
Could be if more, it would have been nice if they'd come talk to me about it. And when he came by, now he came, now he came by after Josh contacted him, and he had an attitude with me. And I tried to talk to him, and then he got all nasty with me, and I kinda got nasty back with him, I'm like, I don't know who the hell you take to talk to. Cause he came by and goes, oh, you don't talk to Mike, boy, you don't, I'm like, excuse me, buddy, but I don't know who the hell you are, but don't come tell the people I need to talk to him, when I didn't talk to him, a full grown man. Said, I'm not sure, you're, I'm not here for you to talk to me, but that ain't gonna happen.
The sad thing we're running to, Polk County in general has, they have no building permits.
Yeah, well, that's when he was, well, that's when he was yelling, so I got the builder's report on my phone, and I'm like, Lord, I said, let's, I talked to Holden earlier. I talked to Cheryl here earlier, and hard to say, cause there's no building permit, and as he did, you would know, if you ever had a building permit, you know, the first line is on building permit, it says, display this building permit. On the street's front side of the building, where the fellow could see it, cause here you are asking me why I'm being nosy and asking about it, and I said, well, I'm a public. I wanna know about it.
Gee, I didn't even realize, like I said, Josh sent email, and I just read it, but he sent the letter, so they quit the work around that round.
They did, yes, they did.
They probably want, he'll get with him, I'm sure he's.
He's been busy, he's been real busy, he said he's gonna try to come up this next week.
They killing us, I mean.
Yeah, that's why, that's why he said, he said, if you can get a hold of Doug, and I'm like, well, and I talked to you the other day, and I'm like. She was saying, if you're down to work, I'm like, well, I ain't gonna bug him on it today, or when he gets home from work. I knew this meeting was going on, so I figured I'd come bend your ear.
But yeah, but that's, that's good, it's in Josh's hands, and Josh, Josh is pretty.
Yeah, yeah, he's lucky, he's a very, yeah.
And, you know, that's what we pay him for.
I, I, I gotta let Kelly know something, she's, she's stressing out.
She feeling any better?
This is a relief, being here. She's still lost in time. She's up and moving around.
I heard she had what, an aneurysm or?
She had a massive brain aneurysm, and then two strokes back and back.
Yeah, I didn't know about the strokes.
Oh, yeah, and, so, she's having a hard time remembering what year it is where she's at, and sort of friends are. She thanks her family from fifteen, twenty years ago, we're still here, and it's a long trip. But she's feeling better, feeling better than what I was, I mean, she could do it. She was fully innovated, couldn't even, she had infected both sides, she was fully paralyzed for the first three weeks in hospital. And she's up walking like she owns business now. So, she's a strong girl, she's not that old. No, she's not, she's lucky, still, she's lucky, she even made it through it. But right now, my kids are watching her, and I'm like.
This meeting about last minute, I.
No wall. She's just, I think she's just sleeping right now.
I was a little worried just from what Josh, I haven't really got to talk to him about it, but he's talked with him apparently, and sent him a letter, and.
Yeah.
So, if they stop construction, he'll, he'll, he definitely, he'll come back to inspect that and make sure, cause I know in Cleveland, most time. You can, out in the county, I mean, we're all, they require.
He's saying when he comes out here, like, wants some lunch, twice a month, no need for him to come anymore, as a reason for him to.
But if you don't, you can build on down there from certain place in the county.
And you can get variances to get.
County, you don't have to worry about it.
But eighteen inches off the property line for a setback is a little extreme.
But down there, if you, if you're not gonna do electrical, you could usually just build, but when you start having electrical, you've got.
But it has a door leading into it from the building, and then leading out of it to the parking lot, and it hasn't attached.
There's no doubt it.
There's a whole lot of issues going on with the way they've constructed it, that, and it's a raised platform flooring, so there's no real way to put a two hour burn wall in it. Uh, I mean, you can, but it ain't blocked, and none of it's been set up for it. And I don't even think at that distance that, that that even falls in the realm of it anyways.
Yeah, when they first did some better, I thought, well, they got plenty of room in the back.
But, but, yeah, the setbacks, I think, that's actually supposed to be, what, ten feet per side, it's supposed to be like twenty feet for a, for a fire jump.
My, my, I'm thinking twenty-five from the property line to the front.
From the front, but on the sides, I think it's ten per ten.
I think it's ten, ten or something.
I think it's ten, ten, cause I think physically, down in Decatur, I did a lot of construction, it was ten, ten, cause you need a twenty-foot fire jump. So, you wouldn't have a neighbor's house burning to burn your house down too.
Maybe ten, twelve or something, well, they like to then, you know, we can.
You can adjust, you can adjust that, and then decks and, cause he blows and all that part fall into a different edit.
But Josh, he's done it for a long time, he good, so if he got it, if they've quit construction, he got their attention, and he'll be, he'll be dead on whether.
Okay, I'm just, like I, like I said, he, he said for me to come down and bend your ear, so I figured I'd come down and bug you now. And that'd be the last to be bugging you. Unless he starts running a hammer over there again.
Really, like I said, and when he does, and I'm sure when he does come up, if Josh is, if you're around, and Josh, Josh will keep you updated, don't they?
He told me.
Yeah, I guess that fence been sort of back there.
Forever.
But I mean, if I drive by, I've been up through there, of course, you drive by.
You can't see it.
Probably never even seen it, didn't know.
You can't, you can't see it now.
Okay, so, yeah, so, we wouldn't do anything about it if you hadn't said anything, Josh wouldn't have been.
Like I said, I got home Sunday night, two thirty in the morning, slept in Monday, didn't pay attention, went up there Tuesday morning to see how it progressed, how the deck is progressing, and I'm like, whoa. What the heck's going on with this, and I, I asked the guys that were framing, I was like, where's permit for this, and they're like, oh, we don't know anything about a permit, we're just doing it, the owners told us, I'm like. And then, and all I did was say, well, you need to let the owner know, you should come talk to me. Went on, a few days later, I still hadn't heard anything about it, so that's why I said, well, this, I'll, I'll call the building inspector. Right, actually, I came to talk to Cheryl, and then I got Josh's number and talked to him.
But he, he's pretty good, I mean, he worked with people, but, yeah, it'd been good if it could have been down the chain of command, because if we'd done that, even planning commission, he'd had opportunity.
Actually, yeah, that, that was my point, that was my point all along.
But I think, that's what we run into here and tell other people, why, I don't know, David's Polk County, I don't have to have a building that well. Polk County, no, you don't, and just the city inside.
That's not true, there are certain areas, depending how far out you are, that have very lax rules, but.
And, and we've done that for a reason, just to, 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 because of that, yeah, so. It's worked out pretty good, I mean, it ain't like we're making, making money off of it, we wasn't doing that, basically, a good, you know, a good inspection takes care of them.
Well, the whole thing is, is it affects everybody else, so it's not just the one person that's building, there's other issues that, that are, that fall into that. My grandbaby's one of them, so, as far as I'm concerned. All right, that was it for me, I'll shut up.
He's, he's got it, like a.
You're yawning too much, it's time to go.
Later, I mentally wore out, yeah.
Oh, you wanna trade places? You wanna talk about mentally wore out?
Mentally, physically, you just.
I feel like my face is like, my skull.
And still trying to work?
Where I can, I can. And she's not able to, we went to the physical therapist today in speech, and they let me know yesterday at the doctor's, that they wanted her to get another neuro evaluation. And she has to go back into the surgeons on Feb, in February to get her checked again, cause they, they had run the X-ray machine so long doing the surgery. That burnt the hair off the top of her head, and a three by three inch square area, but never faded, but other damage inside. So, gotta wait that long to find out, for it to show, for a couple tests to force, and I can stress over that.
Praying for her, hopefully she can get better.
I appreciate it, she is getting better, like, I tell everybody, this is a six month to a year run, and it could be two years. And it might not ever come back all the way, you know, a big chunk of it comes back, it'd be nice.
Did I get anything else, did I hear most, did Jerry?
I'm not sure.
Let's see. I don't know if it did this list, these folks, most leader, I don't even know some of their names, they've been dead for years, so. Well, I'm heading into the household to leave the kids, they were like, well, how long are we gonna be gone, till that time back? Well, how long is that gonna be?
You ain't gotta worry about it, she's asleep.